Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Welcome to the Tuesday, January 16th Meeting of the Board of Aldermen. The first order of business is minutes of the previous meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion to approve. It's been seconded. Any corrections or revisions to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we'll move to public comment where members of the public are invited to address the aboard on matters not on the agenda. And first, we have Ted Plamanos from Rutland City Public Schools. Welcome, Ted.
Well, good evening, everybody, and thank you so much for making it out on this blustery evening. I'm Ted Plamanos. I'm the Business Manager for Rutland City Public Schools, as many of you know. I greatly appreciate the opportunity to speak with you briefly tonight about the recently approved school budget for fiscal '25. Hopefully, many of you had an opportunity to read about the budget in a truly excellent article in the Rutland Herald on Friday. I'm going to recap a few of the basic points from that article, but then, again, one of my purposes is to answer any questions if I can, receive any comments or guidance that you may wish to provide. In the couple of years that I have been the Business Manager for Rutland City Public Schools, again, I've had the privilege and the opportunity to come over and speak on several occasions with the Board of Aldermen and Alderwomen, and I think that's a wonderful thing, you know, as we partner to do the best that we all can for our community. And I'm very fortunate and happy to say that I have with us tonight, we have Bill Olson, the Superintendent of Schools, Kathy Solso, the Board Chair, and Mary Beth Lennox-Levins, who is not only a clerk for our board, but also, very importantly, the Chair of our Finance Committee. And as you probably would appreciate, the budget that we've put together is put together over several months, goes through multiple reviews of Mary Beth's committee, and then the full board. So we like to think that it's been well-vetted, but again, we're open to any questions and comments that you may wish to offer. So with that, hopefully, you've received an electronic copy of several charts that I have. I will go over some of those details quickly if I can to be respectful of your time, but please, if you have any questions along the way, or if I go too quickly over something, let me know. And then, of course, because I'm always very interested in this budget, if I'm dwelling for too long, tell me to move on, and I'll be glad to do it. So on page two is a brief overview of some recent homestead property tax rates, which I know are always of great interest to everybody. And of course, you see on that top line, the actual tax rate after applying the CLA, Common Level Appraisal Factor, for '23 and '24. And of course, the big question on a lot of people's minds right now is what does that look like for '25? And I'll talk about that a little bit later, but I don't want to spoil the surprise at the very beginning. The point of this chart is to show you that for the last few years, we've been very fortunate to maintain a relatively flat tax rate. We are expecting an increase for fiscal '25 for reasons that I will describe. But part of the reason we were able to keep rates flat the last couple of years is since our fiscal '21 budget, the district has steadily and consistently made selective reductions in its full-time positions, where we could do so to optimize our staffing levels, keep them in line with enrollment, and hopefully not displace people who are not otherwise retiring or resigning. So last year's rate of $1.58, I do want to acknowledge upfront, one of the key factors that helped keep that flat was not only our fiscal discipline, but also a very significant increase in a metric provided by the state, which they call the property tax yield. And that yield went up 16% from '23 to '24 and provided a significant moderating factor, not just for Rutland City Public Schools, but of course, for all school districts. We will not have the benefit of that favorable yield factor this year. And then finally, I just wanted to mention at the very beginning and the outset is, of course, the school district has many constituents. You, of course, are our constituents, the civic leaders of the community, all of our students, all of our employees, all of our taxpayers. And so when we develop a budget, of course, we're seeking to optimize the balance as best we can between some of those competing priorities, which of course include maintaining the excellent educational programming, for which the district has long had an excellent reputation, maintaining a sustainable cost structure. And I mean by that, one that's sustainable, not just for the current year, but long-term, being fiscally responsible to our local taxpayers for obvious reasons, and then, of course, hopefully, being able to offer competitive compensation to our almost 500 full-time employees. Because as many of you can appreciate, it is much better to be able to offer competitive compensation that retains, attracts, and motivates our excellent employees, as opposed to losing them through turnover. So with that, I don't see anybody with any questions, so let me move forward to page three. I just wanted to familiarize you briefly with the language that the School Board approved one week ago tonight, and that would call for expenditures of $63.8 million. That total expenditure is up a little over 5% year-to-year, and I'll show you that in a moment. It would result in average spending per student of $12,400, which is a decrease per student of 3% year-to-year. So this is the first time in several years that we're able to say, the average spending per student is actually expected to go down, even though the total's going up. And if you ask, well, why could that be? It's because the number of students in our metric count is going up. As a matter of fact, some of you might recall that when I was here last year, that student cost was more like $20,000 as opposed to $12,000. And that's because it was on an old system of metrics. Many of us in this community advocated for an update to the student waiting metrics, which were more than 20 years old, and that's being implemented for 2025 with favorable impacts for our community and our district, as they should be. As I mentioned in reviewing with the Board last week, I don't look at this so much as a benefit for the current fiscal year, as I do a catch-up for where we should have been for many, many years and had to deal with it. So I'll, in the next couple of pages, just give you a little bit more background on those numbers, okay? The key messages for the fiscal '25 budget for the school district, of course, as mentioned, total expenses increased by about 5.5% when you consider overall factors in terms of inflation and wage increases, a 16.5% increase in medical premiums. We have worked very hard to try and find offsetting efficiencies where we could to keep the overall budget increase manageable. As I mentioned, our per-student cost is actually going to decline from about $12,800 to $12,400 due to the new student metrics, and I'll show you some of those in a moment. After the last several years of reducing our full-time employee positions by a few percent each year, this year, we're anticipating keeping the level flat. We think that we're in pretty good alignment as we optimize our staffing across, you know, not only different educational programs, but between staffing support of our teachers. And we think that's an affordable decision to make, as I'll show you. Our budget does include some very significant and important upgrades, both in athletics and in IT, information technology. Many of you probably know that the turf field at Alumni Field has been there for many, many years. In fact, it's passed its useful life, and so we are planning to replace that this coming summer, as well as updating some sports uniforms, which is part of our periodic rotation for those. The homestead property tax rate, when we look at it before applying the CLA factor, will stay below a 5% cap that's been implemented for this year, based on something called Act 127. And I'll spare you the details unless you want to get into it, but basically, there are going to be many school districts that hit this tax rate cap. Because of the way we've been able to manage our budget, we don't need that cap. Okay, let's move on to page five, then. Here are some very high-level funding and student metrics. As I mentioned to you earlier, if you look in the middle column in blue shading, you'll see our total expenses are anticipated to be about $63.8 million. That's up 5%, or $3 million year-to-year. Our federal funding and local reimbursements are expected to be about flat. And I will indicate to you, as you'll see elsewhere, this is excluding the ESAR grant funding that we had in '24, so that we can have an apples-to-apples comparison. There was about $13.5 million of both expenses and revenues, because they were offsetting in '24. There are no ESAR funds in fiscal '25, because the program ends in September of this year. So to give you a kind of a like-kind comparison, we've taken that out of the '24 numbers. As you can see, when doing that, we're anticipating that our federal grants and reimbursements are going to be about flat year-to-year. There's a lot of uncertainty that goes on with federal funding, as you can imagine, but that's the best guidance we have out of AOE and the U.S. Department of Education. As a result, the full $3 million of expense increases falls right to the bottom line, which is the amount that's remaining for the state to fund after those federal funds have been received. And so $3 million on a base of $42 million, of course, is 8% as opposed to 5%. So what that says is, all of our expenses, less whatever the federal government is going to send back of the tax dollars we sent earlier to Washington, D.C., once we get some of those back, that leaves about $42 million for the state of Vermont to fund, which is up 8%. That's the number that's always used when we calculate cost per student, because frankly, that's all Vermont needs to care about. Those are the funds that they have to provide, so those are the costs they pay attention to. The good news, as I mentioned, is as we switch to a new system of student metrics, from what we used to call equalized pupils, now being called long-term weighted average daily membership, and I've got that in a memo item down below, the metrics changed pretty dramatically. Last year, well, for this year, '24, our equalized pupils were a little over 1,900. Based on this new system of metrics, our like-kind number for the current budget year was 3,000. And by the way, that proportionality is replicated across the state for a number of complicated reasons. But the good news for us, as you can see, is that when we now look at the number for '25, we're up almost 12%. So in spite of the fact that our state funding requirements are going up by 8%, the fact that we're dividing that by almost 12% more students helps us to reduce the cost per student by about 3%. And just for your interest, I put off to the right side there. If you want to look at a state average, the state average for this current fiscal year, 2024, was 12,900 versus the 12,800 average for Rutland City Public Schools. Does anybody have any questions about those numbers? Okay, great. Let's look at page six. Now, I apologize because this page has more numbers on it than I usually like to have. What I'm going to do is highlight a couple of them to you, because there's something important going on with the Common Level of Appraisal statewide, and that is going to have a significant impact on our community and school system, as it will elsewhere. So you always have to think in terms of the homestead tax rate before the CLA and after the CLA. And the rates that you get before CLA are sometimes called the equalized homestead tax rate. Well, nomenclature aside, just so you can see, in that first box on the left, you see the average cost per student. There's the $12,800 for '24 that I mentioned, and the $12,400 for this year that we talked about. Those costs per student equate to a pre-CLA tax rate of $1,307, and our '25 budget goes up very nominally to $1,313. So as you can see, that's a 6 tenths of 1% increase, or basically about half a percent, statistically flat. And so I think that reflects the fact that we benefited as a school system from some metrics that went our way for a change, but also, we worked really hard to keep the budget, the parts that we could control, as reasonable as possible. Now, we have to talk about the Common Level of Appraisal, and that's in the middle box. And last year, or this current fiscal year for '24, the CLA for our community was a little under 83%. And when you use the pre-CLA tax rate in the CLA, and again, sorry for the technicality, but that's how you get to the tax rate of $1.58 that you'll see on the Treasurer's website for the city, and about 30% of people saw on their tax bills. And I say that because about 70% of homeowners in Vermont qualify for the income-based credits, and so they don't pay the full rate. And that's a pretty important factor, but most people are generally interested in, okay, what's the tax rate? Now, the CLA, we have been told by the Department of Taxation for our community, is going to drop by eight percentage points for the coming fiscal year to just under 75%. So even though we kept the pre-CLA rate flat, you can see that's going to cause a pretty significant impact of about 11% increase in the homestead tax rate. So just to put that in perspective, or on the far right, you can see that, well, for somebody who might have a homestead of $100,000, they would have paid, if they didn't qualify for the income credits, about $1,575 in '24, and that would go up to $1,752 this coming year, an increase of $177. Nobody likes tax increases, especially one that's 11%, but I put in a memo item off to the far right, you can see that most of that is due to the CLA, and a relatively small amount is due to the budget that's within our control. And if you don't like the CLA results, I would encourage you to complain to the Department of Taxation and perhaps the Treasurer. But I don't think there's a whole lot they're going to be able to do about it, and let me tell you why, if you flip to the next page. So the Department of Tax, as when it released these CLA results, they were actually released a little bit later than usual this year, and they released them for over 250 cities and towns throughout Vermont. I was curious, so I did a little statistical analysis of these results, and this page shares it with you. So less than 10% of the entities had a CLA that went up year-to-year. 91% had a CLA that went down year-to-year. And you can see the average increase was 23 points. Those are generally towns that have had a reappraisal recently. The average decrease was nine percentage points. Overall, across all of Vermont, you know, I told you that our CLA is 83%, going down to 75. You can see the averages throughout the state. But what's really interesting is almost half of the entities, 47%, are experiencing a drop of 10 percentage points or more. So when you look at the impact on Rutland City Public School of an eight percentage-point drop, you can just imagine what it is for many of these other school districts. The other interesting thing is now, because of what's going on with the CLA and a recent change in the threshold, 2/3 of towns are now in a position where they are required to do a reappraisal. And on average, if you just see when the last appraisal was done across these towns, it was 2015. Ours was done in 2006, as you might recall, and I think we've recently signed a contract so that we'll have a reappraisal, but because of the backlog, that's not likely to be completed for several years. The next page shows you a distribution of the 233 declines, that 91%, and you can see that many of the CLA declines are, you know, within that 10 percentage-point drop. Some, though, are as many as 20 percentage points. And I've got the data on that, if anybody is interested, but you can see that there's going to be a lot of hurt across the state because of these changes. So from that standpoint, I'm very grateful that our administration has been working conscientiously, not just this year, but for several years leading up to this. I always remind people, we're not just doing a budget for this year, we're doing a budget for the future. It has to be sustainable. Decisions we make today are going to affect tomorrow and years after that. And the administration's been very supportive about doing a zero-based budgeting approach every year to try and, you know, make sure that if we can find some efficiency savings, we take full advantage of them. So that's the overview that I had planned to share with you tonight, but with that said, I would be glad to answer, or try to answer at least, any questions or take any comments that you might have.
Alderman Adams? What's the total student count?
Well, it depends on how you measure student count. If you look at enrollment, which I believe is probably the nature of your question, we've got about 1,250 students when you actually do the count in the classroom. But the reason I qualify my answer to you, sir, is because if you look at like that long-term weighted average ADM, the state would say, on that basis, you've got 3,377. But headcount in the schools, 1,850. And it's about the same as last year, actually up a little bit, because we've had the addition of some families to our community, and we're up, I'd say, probably about 50 students from where we were last year at this time.
Sorry, is 1,250 or 1,850?
1,850, sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Thank you for the question.
Any additional questions from the Board? Alderman Kuply?
I certainly want to commend the School Board. This is good work. There are many school boards in the state who are in trouble. They're over their limits, and they're going to be, it's going to be rough going for them to stay within some good, hard numbers. This is good, so I commend all of you for good work.
We have a very dedicated administration, both to delivering excellent quality, but as well as managing our costs, so thank you for that.
If I may. ESAR funds are spent?
They are in the process of being spent. So just to give you a specific answer, our plans are to have the $17 million in total of ESAR funds over several years expended by this summer, because the program, the grants sunset as of September 30. So what we did, sir, was when we put together the '24 budget, we put in all of the remaining ESAR funds, with the idea that we're going to hopefully spend them by June 30, and then have no funds in the first couple of months of '24, even though the program will still be open.
Those, if I may? Those funds are not being utilized on one-time spending?
They are.
They are.
They are. As a matter of fact, when the, you're asking a very, very important point, because when that program, when that program was first brought forward, we strategically made a decision as an administration and a School Board to say, we have to be careful and cognizant of the fact that come September 30, 2024, those funds are over. So we want to use them as intended, of course, for closing learning gaps, preparing for a possible pandemic in the future, any improvements that we could make. But where we hired people to close those educational gaps, interventionist guidance counselors, that sort of thing, we did so with the understanding that either those positions are going to end after the two years of grants, or we're going to make room for them in the local budget as people retire and resign. And we've been managing that really carefully over the last couple of years and tracking it, literally, I'm not exaggerating when I say, we meet every week to talk about that. But then we have many other significant improvements to the school buildings, like HVAC, like removing asbestos and replacing flooring, which, you know, are wonderful things to be able to do to improve air quality and the schools themselves. So those truly are one-time, and we're, because of supply chain disruptions, we have been managing very carefully the kinds of projects that we could do to make sure that the equipment would be received in time and the services completed in time.
Speaking in. The ARPA money for HVAC?
Mm-hmm.
That was different than the ESAR funds?
So I think, ARPA, you're referring to the American Rescue Plan? And my understanding of it, in terms of how the district has used it, obviously, I can't speak to the city's utilization of it, but what we did was that was part of what we called an ESAR III tranche, and we've got about $4 million worth of HVAC projects that we are doing with ARPA ESAR III money, which we deal with together. So the $17 million that I quoted for you included an ESAR I, an ESAR II, and an ESAR III ARPA tranche.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time and your support. We're always here to answer questions if you have them. Thanks again.
All right. Next, we have John Woodward from Mentor Connector.
Hi, everybody. I do have a couple of questions for you, but they won't be as complex as what you just heard.[1493.12][1493.12](Laughter) But I'm from the Mentor Connector, just down the way here. And I will say that I'm going to talk about something similar that Ted talked about, which is one of the constituents, so I'm going to talk about youth. But I have a question for you first, to get your mind thinking about what I'm going to talk about tonight. What's the, what is the exit, what is the top weight in pounds that a bowling ball regulation can be? Top weight can exceed a certain amount of pounds? Regulation bowling ball, in case you're thinking about non-regulation. You can call it out.
13.
13, close, higher.
18.
.5.
Ooh, very close. 16, 16, very good. How did you know that?[1540.45][1540.45](Laughter) Now, this was, this was not planned, but of course, Barbie is a bowler, and so what's great is she will attend the 16th Annual Mentor Bowl, which is coming up in how many days? 11 days. So it's coming up on Saturday, the 27th. As of this afternoon, we have 45 teams registered, so we've got a handful of slots left. Our teams are four people. We ask folks to fundraise $300. All the funds that are raised for the Mentor Bowl go to community-based mentoring. And if you have any questions, I remember when I was here last time, I told you that there are youth on the waiting list who are waiting to be matched with a positive adult youth, a positive adult mentor. And if you have any questions or any doubts about the mentor-mentee relationship, Barbie is a great person to ask. She's been a mentor for over eight years for the same mentee, and it is just, it's powerful and unforgettable. And so everything that we raise, this is our primary fundraiser that we do every year, I was hired just before the Mentor Bowl, so happily, I didn't have to do any of the planning, which was really nice. I just got to go and be a part of it. But when I was here last, I said, if anyone in the room, and I was sort of speaking more to the Aldermen, Aldermen and women, that if you needed to sort of dust off your bowling shirt, maybe dust off some old bowling shoes, that you should do that. But now, I'm saying that if you've got some bowling skills that you just haven't put to use, and you want to just come brag on the 27th and show off some skills, this is a perfect time to do that. So if you know anyone, if you're interested in coming on the 27th, we're hoping to fill a couple of more teams, and we'd love to do that. We've got 45 teams, we're shooting for 50, but it's great fun, great music, great food. We have a big 50-50 raffle. And then I brought these tickets here, and I'd never seen them before, so these are tickets. So we've brought back the basket raffle this year. So it's been a few years since we've had a basket raffle. And how many of you can just raise your hand know that there's a Facebook page for Vermont Basket Raffles? Yeah, who knew? I didn't know. I had no idea of it. But it's a thing. And so basket raffles are a big deal. And what's been great about the last couple of months is so many members of our community have really stepped up, and we've got about 32 different baskets that are full of all kinds of things. So I want to just tell you, just read a couple of what they are. So we've got baskets from Killington, we've got baskets from King Arthur Baking Company, we've got a Camping Outdoors basket, Vermont Roofing Company, it's full of tools, Chinese New Year baskets. So how many people know what the animal in the Chinese calendar was last year? I'll give it to you. It was the dragon. How about this year, coming up? This year, 2024?
This year is the dragon.
What's that?
This year is the dragon.
This year's the dragon, sorry. This year's the dragon. Next year?
The rabbit.
The snake, the snake. That's right. So if you come and are part of the basket raffle, you could win, obviously, one of those baskets. We've got Vermont Sports and Fitness as well, and Mitchell's Tees, and a whole bunch of others. But what's great is we're going to do something a little bit different with the basket. So if you come to the Bowlarama on the 27th, and you're not bowling, you can still participate in the basket raffle. So you would come and buy a sheet of these tickets. It's $20 for 25 tickets, and then you can obviously see all the baskets that are there inside the Bowlarama. But wait, there's more. Next week, I'm going to be in the office next week, and we're going to invite anyone from the public who would like to come and put tickets, buy tickets, and put them in the baskets inside the Mentor Connector office. So Monday and Tuesday, it'll be at the end of the day for folks that can't leave in the middle of the day. Wednesday through Friday will be lunchtime, so if you're finding yourself with a few extra minutes and want to just saunter on over to the Chittenden Building, second floor, Suite 210, you'll find me, my wife will probably be there as well, and then we'll line up about 28 to 30 different baskets. And so, you know, we'd love to just sort of get as much interest in the basket raffle as possible. Obviously, we want to raise as much funds as we can for the youth and get as many of the youth off the waitlist. There are many who've been waiting a long time. And the match process, as Barbie can attest... And the match process, as Barbie can attest, it's a very intentional one, it, but it's very exact. And so I'll just tell you that Bobby Joe Stellato, who's our Director of Programs, would tell you that it only takes a couple of not-so-great matches, and she's been there for ten years, to make matches that are just fantastic all the way out. So we really want to give those youth on the waitlist the opportunity to be paired with someone with a really positive adult who can create an experience for them that lasts for years, similar to Barbie. So we hope to see you at the sixteenth annual Mentor Bowl. It's next Saturday, two bowling times, twelve-thirty and two-thirty. And if you want to saunter over to the office next week and partake in the basket raffle, I'll be there for sure. So thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Do we have any additional members of the public here to address the board on items not on our agenda? Step right up. If you could just state your name for the record.
Hi, my name's Craig Rabidou. I'm a Uber driver. I have been for seven years. I know Uber needs to be registered as a taxi in the city. I've had to pay for it. One thing I have that I find kind of intrusive is to have a physical to drive my own car. I know it's something that you guys say. Uber does not ask me to do that. It's a non-CDL vehicle, and we can only hold six passengers. The cars that are ten years are newer. You know, it's, it's just paying the fee for a physical, I don't think is right. Burlington does not require this. Rutland City is the only one that does. You know, and, you know, it's, it's, it's just been kind of frustrating. There's one taxi that I know of in Rutland City. Everybody's always looking for transportation. I get calls middle of the night from the hospital to take people home because there's no transportation around. I do it as a courtesy to the hospital and to the public. Two weeks ago, I had a seventy-seven-year-old gentleman that was sleeping in his car over in the Walmart parking lot because he didn't have a ride. I found out he was a veteran. I contacted Dodge House. He is now at the Dodge House, and they're helping him find permanent, a permanent residence. So I just don't do it, you know, for myself. I do it for the community also. I've lived in this area since nineteen-ninety-one, and I'd like to see, I just think that that needs to be visited by whoever put that on there. The gentleman that I know that started that is no longer around driving taxis. And Uber does do a facial recognition. When I turn the app on, it asks me to take a picture of myself that I'm driving. Nobody else will be driving. So it's a great thing to use. I've been doing it in Burlington and Killington for over seven years. So any questions?
Questions, statements from members of the board? Alderwoman McClure?
I'd like to make a motion to refer Mr. Rabidow's concerns to the Charter and Ordinance Committee.
Second. All right, so we have a motion to refer this issue to Charter and Ordinance. It has been seconded. Any discussion on the referral? Alderwoman Hooker?
I'm not familiar with the ordinance, with the requirement. Can you tell me how frequently you have to have the physical? Is it an annual or is it once when you get a license?
I can't, I can't hear.
She asked, she said she's not familiar with the details of the ordinance, and she asked how often the physicals require of the driver.
That I'm not sure here, whatever, I'm not sure if it's when you sign up, you know, to get the approval to have it, because I know you got to put a sticker on your car saying that you're Rutland City-approved. And I think, I mean, I just had a physical to get my license back, so.
Cheryl, I would have to, I'd have to refer to the ordinance myself if it's annually or not. Okay.
So we have a motion to refer this to committee to take a closer look at the ordinance. It's been seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So when we have a meeting, if you leave your contact information with the clerk, we can contact you when we're going to have the meeting.
Okay. Sounds good.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional members of the public here to address the board on matters not on our agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to communications from the mayor. Mayor Dungus?
Hey, good evening, everyone. So I'll return to kind of my normal format for a little while. What we've done, we have submitted that grant that you all approved last week to Office of Economic Opportunity, signed it, and they are processing it right now, which is great. So hopefully we will see that. That actually is going to help us with the ongoing development of the homeless transition campus. We're also, I've started having conversations with the property owners. I'll be meeting with one of the property owners next week to talk about whether they're willing to sell or not, which is good. And then if we, if we have two pieces of interest there, then I'll be working with the Rutland Housing Authority to, the Rutland Housing Authority will sign LOIs with those property owners so that we can start using those outside resources to work towards that homeless transitional campus. So the ball's rolling on that, and that is probably my first lesson on working with the state for grants and things of this nature and how long it actually takes, nine months and counting. Public outreach, I've been actually having a lot of conversations with business owners and members of the public over the past few weeks, just trying to understand what everybody's feeling, thinking right now. We've, we've had a lot going on with public safety with homeless transition, but there's also been a real energy around what's going on in Rutland and investment in our community. And I'm seeing real positive results out there, and I thought it's worth mentioning. The conversations I'm having with people, especially those visiting our community for the first time, is fantastic. People love our downtown. We're hearing great things. I just had a conversation the other day with somebody who came up from Connecticut. They're here with their family to go skiing, and they turned the corner from Strong Zav onto Center Street and saw it all lit up and decorated and how nice it looks down here. People are just really excited to be on our space. And I know we here at the Board of Aldermen tend to hear a lot of the things that need fixing, and there are a lot of things that may need that, but it'd be, I thought it'd be nice for you to hear some real positive feedback from people as they come to visit our town from out of the state. Did have a meeting with Stafford Technical Centers Construction Advisory Board. This is the board that looks at the construction group at Stafford and what we can do to raise awareness there, how we can get more students into the program and potential projects for, for Stafford. And Stafford's actually looking at all sorts of things, especially on the construction side. Now, construction is one group, and then there's also electrical and plumbing, which is another, but they do work tightly together. So we're talking about, you know, maybe look, them looking at some city-owned properties again for renovation or for building, which is a real opportunity there that we'd like to get them involved with. But one thing during this meeting that was really common, and there's some real, real good members on this board, was everybody sees the need for growth in Rutland, and everybody sees how things are developing, how there are currently no contractors available. And the school keeps getting calls about, are your students available for internships? Now, there are some challenges with these students doing co-ops, right? Because contractors, they want you to show up at seven, they want you to leave at four, and the students really can only go from about ten till three, right? So, but we're trying to find creative ways to do that because, you know, we talk about it pretty consistently here. That program, the programs we have at Stafford are the future workforce for our city, so we want to continue to invest in them. The reason I bring that up now is there may be some city-owned property conversations with Stafford in the future, so just be aware as that comes down the line. Department, Vermont Department of Tourism and Marketing actually came to Rutland last week for a program called Think Vermont Grow, the Think Vermont Grow Grant. I'm sorry, so it's Grow Vermont is kind of the initiative, but the idea is this is the state's marketing department looking to communities to say, how are you going to help us bring people here? And Rutland was used as the example through this whole program of how to do things correctly. The Concierge Program that's been run by Cedar and in the past Reddick has brought lots of people to our community, people that you know and that you probably are friends with today. That program was recognized to be something that's absolutely fantastic in the state, and the state wants to continue that. So they're giving out grants to that respect. But one thing to note is because it did so well down here, the state gave Cedar one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to continue that program and continue that outreach to people who may want to live in our community and get them connected to people like yourselves to, to really give that them, that red carpet treatment, as they call it. Oh, there is one thing tied to that. The Vermont Futures Project, which is a, kind of a group that was started by the Vermont State Chamber, they are focused on population growth in the state. So they're, they have a date and a goal, and I believe their date is twenty-thirty-five, but I could be wrong. But the goal is eight-hundred-and-two-thousand people living in the state of Vermont. That's a big percentage, that's a big growth, that's a big push, but that's their goal. And what's really interesting, when we were having conversations with Vermont Futures Project, and when I was talking to Ed, the guy who's, came down to see us, our goals are very similar to the ones that we're talking about here in Rutland. We need to grow the population, to ease the tax burden on those people, to fulfill the, essentially the design of our cities, right? We're a thirty-thousand-person city with fifteen-thousand people living here. So as they have these goals to grow Vermont, they can't all grow in one place. They're going to have to grow across the board. So Rutland is a perfect spot for a lot of that growth to happen. We had that conversation. We're going to try to have some deeper conversations, and I've actually even asked if the Grow Vermont Project will come down to Rutland and do a public presentation to our community to talk about what their initiatives are. So that'll be coming down the line. We have to get that scheduled. So what we're doing tomorrow, I'm headed up to Montpelier. I'm going to be testifying on the retail theft bill as well as a couple, popping into a couple other committees to talk about things that are, with representatives, to talk about things that are going on down here and how what they're doing up there can make a bit of a difference. I'm also going to be up there on Thursday, the Vermont Leagues of Cities and Towns meeting, where we're going to be talking about public safety and housing and things of that nature as well. We did our HR interview, director interview last week. We think we have a good candidate. I'll give you more of an update on that after, after we complete that. I want to talk for a second about Park Mobile rollout. It's been going quite well. We're going to be putting out some videos on the city website. For those who don't know how to use Park Mobile, you'll be able to go on our city website, watch a video, give you the instructions on how to do it. I'm going to hop down to the radio station, kind of give a description, and we're going to see if we can do something with Peg TV as well. Downtown Partnership is also going to help us with that marketing initiative to get the education out there. To that end, we have seen good use on Park Mobile, but we're expecting to see better use. Officer Rosario is back on the street in downtown and has started enforcing parking again. So for those who are out there who have noticed the Officer Rosario working on other things, be aware that he's out there looking for cars that haven't paid for their parking. So you may want to use that app, download the app, and make sure you've got your spot and your parking paid for. Let's see, I'm good there. Got a couple other things. I'm going to shorten it up a little bit here. What we're doing, we're doing Mondays with Mike again on January twenty-second at eight-thirty at Speakeasy this time. We had a couple people at Luceluna last time, which is great, and then we're going to try to actually get out a couple more spots as well. And then Administrator Strinasty asked if, that I let you know that he is working to amend the, the NDA, which is the Neighborhood Development Area. Currently, it covers a lot of downtown, a couple other areas. We're actually going to be expanding that NDA to also cover the intersections of Route Four and Seven. This gives us two advantages. One, it will help us with the TIF exemptions, if those exemptions are dedicated strictly to the NDA, and it'll also, I'm sorry, sorry, I got that confused, the Act two-fifty exemptions, and it'll help us bring it into the TIF, into the TIF district if we do that. So those are the two things, adding it to the Act two-fifty exemptions and bringing it into the TIF district as well, that section of town. I think that's it. Any questions?
Alderman Gillum?
Yes, while you're in Montpelier, I want you to look up H-seven-one-nineteen. That's a bill that was just introduced this week dealing with Act two-fifty municipal zoning laws and housing. And lowering some of the standards so we can do density housing so we don't have to spread out anymore.
That's right.
I think Clifford is one of the sponsors, Representative Clifford, and the gentleman from Fairhaven is also a sponsor.
Right.
So touch base with them because I think that's something we should be interested in, Rutland.
Right. I sent Representative Clifford an email today letting her know I was going to be up there, so I'll make sure I get that.
Because there is some money in here, eight million, six million, five million in there for.
Great. Thanks, Alderman Gill.
Welcome.
Alderman McCann?
Yeah, I think at our last meeting, you mentioned that there might be an update on the capital improvement plan, sort of planning.
So we officially have the grant. It's been announced. We haven't had the conversation with the grantor yet, but we're going to reach out to them this week, find out what the next steps in the process are, and then we have to put out an RFP. So we'll be coming back to you with that, to put out an RFP to, to find a consultant to help us put together that plan.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Great, thanks.
Moving to additions and deletions to the agenda, we have one addition, adding the Recreation Committee report. And as is our custom, I'd like to move petitions, letters, and miscellaneous communication, communications up to the top of our agenda, so those folks don't have to wait.
So moved.
And someone else suggested that we also move Board of Cannabis Commissioners up.
So moved.
Second.
So we have a motion. It's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, we'll move to petitions, letters, miscellaneous communications. First, we have a special events permit request for Center Street sledding on February twentieth. A copy of the permit application is on pages sixteen to seventeen of your packet. Superintendent Peters indicated that she could not be here tonight because of the snow, but we've approved this in past years, and it looks quite similar. Alderman Gillum?
She called me to talk about it. This is the annual event that we have on Center Street for sliding. Technically, Casella is the sponsor, but they work through the Department of Rec, who are the other sponsor for this Winterfest project. So I'd like to put a motion on the floor to approve. Suspend the rules, first of all. Suspend the rules.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Like to approve the special events permit for the Center Street sledding.
Second.
And we have a motion to approve the SCP for Center Street sledding. It has been seconded. Any debate?
And for people at home, that's on February the twentieth, starting at eleven o'clock AM.
Seeing no debate, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we'll move to the special event permit application for the Juneteenth strut, to be held on June twenty-second. There's a copy of the permit application on pages eighteen to nineteen of your packet. Welcome.
Hello. So I have Monica Ganguly-Kiefern on speakerphone. She couldn't make it because of the weather. She's on the board of NAACP. Monica, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Ish, yes.
Great, welcome. Any questions from members of the board?
I can talk a little louder, too. Is that better?
She's just saying she could talk louder. Sorry.
Any questions for members of the board about this permit application? Alderwoman McClure?
Could Monica from over the phone tell us a little bit more about this event?
Yep. So last year, Pride and the NAACP celebrated Juneteenth together. Since our festival fell so closely to Juneteenth, we wanted to make sure that we recognize that, too. I'm also on the board for Pride, which is why I say we. And it went really, really well, so this year we wanted to make it bigger. well. So this year, we wanted to make it bigger. So we're planning to do what we're calling a Juneteenth strut, which is really just gonna be a walk down from the library to the festival on Center Street, where we can open the festival together. We're trying to make it short, so that it's accessible to everyone, because we have some folks who might attend who have mobility issues. It shouldn't need that street to be closed more than like 10:30 to 11:30, just for gathering and then walking.
Great. Alderwoman Tatiyo?
Uh, thank you for planning this, and I will make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
All right, motion to suspend the rules has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I will make a motion to approve the Juneteenth strut on June 22nd, 2024, from 11:00 AM till 11:30 AM on, where's the location? On Center Street.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the application for the Juneteenth strut. It has been seconded. Any debate? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And finally, we have a special event permit application for the 2024 Rutland County Pride Festival, also on June 22nd, and a copy of the permit application is on pages 20 to 23 of your packet. Welcome again.
I'm Sam Davis Boyd. I am the co-chair of the board at Rutland County Pride, and also co-chair of the committee that helps plan the festival, and...
I'm William Fornay Mills. He/him pronouns. I'm the executive director of Rutland County Pride.
And she/her pronouns. So I'm here just to quickly, briefly, talk about the 2024 Rutland County Pride Festival, which will take place on Saturday, June 22nd, from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Yes. And so the, the plan is kinda have, to have a kind of soft start at 10 o'clock. So folks from the vent, from the farmer's market, and whoever wants to come check out our amazing vendors can come. And then our lovely partners with the NAACP will have the Juneteenth strut into the festival, where we'll go in full swing at 11:30, with all of our performers and speakers on the stage from 11:30 till close at 5:00. You know, after the success of last year's festival, where we saw nearly 4,000 people come to the festival in the pouring rain, you know, we continue to see the, the need to hold a Pride Festival in Rutland County and southern Vermont. And so with the success of the festival, we're asking to actually extend, as you can see from the permit, so having Center Street closed, but extending to have Merchants Row closed as well, very similar to like the Whoopin' Pie Festival or Friday Night Live from this past year. And we've continued to partner with, you know, the NAACP, Downtown Rutland Partnership, Cedar, Farmer's Market, Come Alive Outside, and we're just so excited as Rutland County Pride to continue to, you know, work together to create a Pride Festival and celebrate the LGBTQIA2S+ folks in and throughout Rutland County Pride. And thank you for letting us be here. Any questions?
Alderwoman Tatiyo?
I'm gonna make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
All right, motion to suspend the rules has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'm gonna make a motion to approve the Rutland County Pride 2024 Pride Festival on June 22nd, from 10:00 AM till 5:00 PM on Center Street and Merchants Row, and then I also have a comment.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the event permit for the 2024 Rutland County Pride Festival. It's been seconded. Alderwoman Tatiyo again.
Thank you for planning this. I thought last year's was a really good success, and I'm excited to see what you have in store for this coming summer. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Alderman McCann?
Yeah, also, thank you. I'm excited to have this in Rutland again. Question, I see musicians on here. Is there a plan for a stage or anything anywhere, or is it?
Yes, so the stage, I'm sorry, I did not mention that. It'll be, again, similar to Friday Night Live, so like kind of in front of Depot Park. That's the plan for...
Very cool. Thanks.
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor of the motion to approve?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would entertain a motion to go into the Board of Cannabis Commissioners.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We're in the Board of Cannabis Commissioners, and we have a request to approve the renewal of the retail license for Somewhere on the Mountain. Is there someone from Somewhere on the Mountain here to speak?
Here.
Yes. All right, any, I would need some kind of motion from the board?
I will make a motion to approve, reapprove their Somewhere on the Mountains permit for the next year.
Great. All right, so we have a motion to approve. It's been seconded. Alderwoman McClure?
Due to relation to the individual representing Somewhere on the Mountain, I will be recusing myself from this vote.
Very good. Thank you for letting us know. Any questions from members of the board? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Motion to, motion to go out of the Board of Cannabis Commissioners?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to go out. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So we'll move to reports and letters from department heads and officials. First up, we have Commissioner Protavansky and Water Treatment Manager Giraffano with an update related to water treatment.
Just wanted to give an update on the violation, the exceedance, I guess is the right term, for disinfection by products. And answer any questions. Message overall is the water safe to drink? We... Help me out here. It's, it's a rolling average per quarter.
Right, so it's, it's not an immediate test. So what happens is, we have exceeded an average of four quarters. That's how they come up with exceedance, 60%. We are 60.5% currently. The next quarter, it could come down. To be honest, I find it highly unlikely that it'll come down enough to come out and come back into compliance.
Has to, has to be a pretty low test number to get out of that high average.
So I'm expecting the violation to move forward. That being said, we've been in communication with the state of Vermont, and have applied for an EPA technical support grant. Well, they're gonna partner us up with some people from federal government, and maybe some colleges.
Right, could be University of Maine, something like that.
Right, it could open up a lot of things to explore other technologies, any avenue to come out of this.
They said the funding, it opens up a lot of doors for funding to take care of the problem also, so that's a plus.
Alderwoman Tatiyo, did you have a question?
Yeah, I do have a question. What are the consequences for this violation? A fine?
No.
No, it's just...
We have to move forward.
We have to show progress and take care of the problem.
Yes. And that being said, it's going to take time. I know a lot of people don't want to hear that, but we have to do our diligence, so that we don't cause other problems down the road with that is happening in other communities.
It's a really hard issue to explain when somebody calls or emails, because it could be a number of issues causing it. Organics in the, in the brook, organics in the old pipes, age of the water. So until we, until we drill down and, and figure out where the biggest bang for the buck is gonna be, we don't know yet.
No.
We're doing a lot of things in-house, too, some piping project planning, some additional testing. We're trying to get ahead of it before we...
Right, we're trying to find out whether this is a locational problem, because there are four locations that we sample out. We're gonna take six additional samples this quarter, this coming quarter in February. That will give us a little bit more of an idea as to whether it's a locational issue, or if it's a holistic issue. And it narrows down as if it's gonna be a distribution fix, or a treatment fix, or if it's gonna turn into a combination.
Alderman McCann?
Yeah, thanks for sharing the information today at our last meeting. I think the mayor shared some, and the, the information that came out with the bills was good, even though it sort of looks scarier than it is. There was a great write-up in the Herald. I know it seems like people are, when they hear that there's a water quality issue, they kinda, their hackles come up, but I appreciate the information you're trying to get out there. I do have a question, or two questions, I guess. So in terms of the locationality, I think there was a, the mayor might have mentioned it, right, that there are some places that might test higher, some places that might test lower, and is that because when the water sits stagnant longer, these, the halocytic acids kind of build up? Is that the idea?
It could be.
They continue to grow.
Okay.
So the longer the disinfectant is in contact with the organics, if the formation of disinfectant byproducts, in our case, the halocytic acid, any one of those five compounds, keeps growing. So water age, if it's used, it stops growing because it's used. So yes.
Are, are you able to share sort of where the, the oldest kind of water in the system is, or, or why?
That's what we're doing with these extra samples.
Gotcha, okay.
I'm trying to, there was a, a study done, and I don't recall the year, it's gotta be over 25 years ago, as to why these samples' locations were picked. Things could have changed, especially because we've done a lot of work with them for five years. It might, that's called ideas. We may have to do a new ideas. There is a lot of balls in the air right now. We're in communication with the state. There hasn't been any decisions made on their part either. There's just a lot of ideas that we're throwing around right now, and that's really where all of us.
They've been really partnering with us, help us beyond belief, so it's been nice to not have that advocate role.
And one more question, if I can. Are you willing or able to share sort of what our highest individual kind of test result was as opposed to that rolling average?
Yeah, the highest one, I don't know if it's set on the, on the notice or not. It was actually, we saw a drink facility.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks. Any additional questions from members of the board? Alderman Gillum?
Do you need to have this in committee in case you need some emergency meetings? Because if it's sitting in committee, we can pick it up at any time.
Probably wouldn't hurt, yeah, sure.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, I'd like to move this in committee.
Okay.
Something that needs to get done in a hurry. We're ready to go.
All right, so we have a motion to refer this water treatment issue to the Public Works Committee. It's been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both for coming. Next, we have Barbara Spalding from the Rutland Redevelopment Authority with a recommendation to approve a business incentive and assistance program loan. A memo and copy of the loan application are in pages 1 to 8 of your packet. Sorry to keep you waiting.
Oh, worries. Good evening, Happy New Year. I didn't get to be here for the 11-minute So Mary Crockett is applying for a $10,000 BIAP forgivable loan and referral to Heritage Family Credit Union for a secured loan to move her home-based bakery from West Rutland to Rutland at 56 Strong's Avenue, formerly Delicious Tacos and Big Lenny's. The funds will be used for renovations, equipment, and supplies, as outlined in her application. The specialty bakery meets the criteria of the BIAP through the creation of two full-time jobs. And the RRA board met on June, I'm sorry, January 9th, and recommended approval of, of the $10,000 BIAP forgivable loan and referral to Heritage Family Credit Union for the pies to the limit. And Mary is here to answer any questions that you might have.
Welcome.
Thank you all for having us here tonight. So let me just tell you a little bit about our bakery. So I started in 2014, did it for about a year, did a lot of things that I learned I didn't want to do, did meals for people, had essentially a bakery on my front porch where people could just come and get stuff. And that just didn't work with my family. We were homeschooling our kids, and it was just too much. So I closed for a few years, reopened in 2019. Since then, we've gone, our, our revenue has gone up 100% as of 2023. But we're kind of limited in a home. Right now, our hours are by appointment only. If we open down here, we'll be open like 6:00 to 2:00, walk-in, coffee. You know, it's just gonna be a huge shift for us, but it's also gonna be really good. I really think it'll be a huge success.
Alderwoman McClure?
So you say specialty bakery. What are some of your specialties? Or is that proprietary?
Nope, nope. So we do decorated sugar cookies. That's our biggest thing, and actually, we did some for the Mentor Connector. So we teach classes on that. I rent a place on House Street right now for classes. We do bread, we do everything, really. The only thing I won't do is anything fried, because there's no anseled hood there, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from other members of the board? Alderman Gillum?
Just so people know at home, what she's purchasing here, she's, she's got a lot of equipment here that she's purchasing. Double stack commercial ovens, commercial refrigerators. So there's a lot of equipment she's purchasing. It's not just a lot of things. So there's a lot of money going into equipment to bring that into a full bakery.
So they are providing, excuse me, they are providing a commercial mixer, commercial freezers, the owner of the property. It's already set up with a three-bay sink, the hand wash station, tables, chairs, bathrooms. My husband will do a lot of the handiwork, so we don't have to hire that out. And everything that we'll be purchasing within, with the exception of one thing, is used, that we found.
Seeing nothing further. Alderwoman Tatiyo?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to suspend the rules. It has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And a motion to approve the $10,000 BIAP forgivable loan for Pies the Limit, and the referral to HFCU for their loan.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve. It has been seconded. Any debate? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda, it was going to be Recreation Director Dolan, who can't be here because of the weather, with a request related to the replacement of the bleachers at the community center. There are documents on pages 9 to 12 of your packet. I got a communication from Superintendent Peters that because they are now familiar with the capital improvement planning process, this is just for information only, and they'll wait for that process to play out. So...
I was wondering, we should refer this to committee, so when we do take it up, it's ready to go.
Why not?
So moved.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to refer. It's been seconded. Mayor Dungus, did you want to comment?
Sure. So you're welcome to refer it to committee if you want to put it in there. It will be part of the capital improvement planning process, and there'll be definitely opportunities for feedback as we go through that. So you may not have to have it in committee. It's, it's totally up to you, but I just want to give you that information before you vote.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion to refer to Recreation. Alderman Gillum?
Yes.
And it's been seconded. Any discussion on the referral? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next up is Treasurer Markowski with the Treasurer's Financial Reports for the quarter ending December 31st. These were emailed to board
Thank you, everyone. I know I sent the information a little late, but also in sitting here, listening to the school presentation, I thought, let's talk about, we're gonna talk about December. We're gonna talk about the fact that December was a big month. We were very busy with the budget. So when I'm looking at December results, I'm looking and saying, where are we in December? How are those departments doing? And what do we think it looks like in terms of a surplus? Do we look like we might have one? If you look at the reports that I sent, you see that most of the departments are at 50%. So we budgeted X amount, and we're right there. We're not looking like we're gonna have a lot left over expense category. I think that's really important. Usually, as you're aware, the police budget leaves quite a bit on the table. I don't anticipate that this year. So in terms of offsetting that budget that was voted on. So I think it's really important to think about that process and really communicate, what does that mean to the taxpayers if we don't have that surplus? We just heard from the school predicting an 11% increase on the homestead. That's, that's, I did a quick calculation. I think the, when you look at your tax bill, 52% is municipal, and the balance is school. So it's almost even. So we're looking at 11%. We're looking at a additional spending, 8% increase on the municipal side. Looking back historically, which I did, because I like to kind of watch how these happen, when we have, in the past, when we've had kind of the school might be up a bit, the city, not that they're balancing acts, but they kind of have worked together in the, to favor the taxpayer, where if the school rate was up, the city rate might be down a little bit and offset a little bit, really help the taxpayer. Now, I did not see an instance quite like this one, going back to, I went back to 2009, where both rates were, were predicting a significant increase. So I did see, so that surplus becomes more and more important. We really, really need that. We're looking at $1.8 million in additional spending over the prior year. I also want to say to the public that I will make sure that we get that proposed budget on the website. Really important to know what you're voting for when you're, when you, in March. What is, what is that city budget looking like, and making an informed decision. But I did want to highlight fiscal year 2019, the city tax rate was up 11%. School rate was down. So the total rate change was 5.5%. And we didn't have a whole lot of surplus there. The budget itself was up 1.1 million, with the $250,000 surplus. So the taxpayers saw a $255 increase on the homestead rate. So think about it, this year, you're gonna get that from the city and from the school, and that is on the homestead rate. We're not even talking about those, the non-homestead rate. Imagine what that's gonna look like for businesses. Just listening to the school's presentation, I think it's really important to consider, you know, to just talk about what, what is this budget gonna do to the tax rate? That's what I look for when I look at December's financials, and, and I hope that you'll be looking there too. Not a lot of departments falling way under that 50%. I don't see a lot of savings in this budget, but who knows? Well, it's really important to look at it at those quarter ends. We'll know better when we get through March. But I, I did want to point that out, having listened to the presentation from the school, they always do a great job explaining how that, how that's gonna impact our taxpayers. they always do a great job explaining how that, how that's going to impact our taxpayers. Concerns that I have when I look at December fall way beyond general fund and into that water and sewer. Really taking some time to look at those numbers there. So as with all of the quarterly reports, I look, I would ask the board to refer these to Finance Committee so we can take a closer look at the numbers for December.
Second. All right, so we have a motion to refer the quarterly report to the Finance Committee. It's been seconded. Any debate on the referral? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay.
Thank you, Treasurer.
Thank you. Any questions on December or the budget?
Seeing none.
Okay. If anyone has questions, please call me. Thank you.
Next is Clerk Kapusta presenting a resolution regarding a charter proposal relating to fluoride. This is on pages 13 to 15 of your packet.
Okay. So there's just a couple of things that the board needs to do. I would just like to let you know that this is a petition that was submitted to the Clerk's office and validated on December 5th with the required number of signatures. So this question, which is on page three of that document, is what will be placed on the ballot for a charter change as it relates to fluoride. So as part of this, we have to set, or the board has to set two public hearings, and to allow time for this to get into the paper and for proper notification of days, I'm looking to set the two public hearings, the first one Monday, the 29th of January at 5:30, and then Wednesday, the 31st at 5:30 in chambers as well. And if you all are in approval of that, I will circulate a resolution for signature.
So those are different than the dates that went out in the packet?
Yes.
I was just going to say, looking at...
On consultation with the city attorney, those are now the best dates to do this.
And when we could get it into the paper, that was the other piece.
So I'd entertain a motion to suspend the rules if...
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'll make a resolution to circulate the proposal for signature.
Second.
And to set the two public hearings for...
Monday, the 29th at 5:30 and Wednesday, the 31st at 5:30.
Yes.
Very good. So we have a motion to set the public hearings related to this charter proposal for Monday, January 29th, and Wednesday, January 31st, and to circulate for signatures.
Second.
Yes, Alderman McCann?
Yeah, can someone come in on sort of the, the structure of these hearings and how it works and what happens? I mean, is it just for people to make public comment? Is there a presentation? Do we share information?
My experience has been that there's limited presentation. The information is published on the city website and in the Herald and is, you know, widely available to any members of the public who would be interested, and then it's an opportunity for them to come and address us, share their thoughts, share their concerns, or ask questions of us.
Great, thank you.
Historically, participation in these public hearings is minimal.
Just a point of order here. This is to put on the ballot or this is to set the hearings up?
We're setting the hearings.
Setting the hearings up, but yes, it is going to go on the ballot. It's to see, this, the last page had the question, that will go on the ballot.
So you need our signatures on this document to put it on the ballot, not a vote?
Um...
Of course, the city attorney's not here to ask.
Yeah.
Because normally, we just vote to put it on the ballot and that's it, and then you have your public hearings. So this is something new.
No, this is similar to what we did, was done last year for the 1% option tax.
So this is following the same procedures?
Same procedures as that, yes.
This is a charter proposal.
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make it clear what we're doing here. Yep.
I can read the 10 bulleted items.
Oh, no, no, I'm looking at it right now. You don't have to read it.
But it lays out the process for responding to the public petition to have this on the ballot. All right, so we have a motion. It has been seconded to set the public hearing dates and to circulate this resolution for signatures. Is there any additional discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Finally, we have Attorney LaChance's request for approval to contract with outside legal counsel. This was emailed to board members, but Attorney LaChance is out sick. What does the board wish to do? Mayor Dungus?
Yeah, we have recreation. So just, it says it in your paperwork, but there were two respondents to the RFP that you approved for legal counsel. We would like to enter into contract negotiations with both so that we can leverage services depending on the, the firm and the pricing.
All right. Alderman Tadio?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to suspend the rules. It has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And motion to approve the RFP for Ryan Smith &amp; Carbine &amp; for Stitzel Page &amp; Fletcher as outside legal counsel.
Second.
No. I think it's to enter into negotiations.
Enter into negotiations. Okay, I'm not looking at the paper. A motion to enter into contract negotiations with Ryan Smith &amp; Carbine &amp; Stitzel Page &amp; Fletcher for outside legal counsel.
Second.
Very good. So we have a motion. It has been seconded to allow the city attorney and the mayor to enter into contract negotiations with these two outside firms. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Alderman Gillum?
Making a point, we're not approving it tonight, we're just moving it forward to get negotiations started.
Correct.
It still has to come back to us for the vote, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Any additional debate? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have reports of standing committees, and we have Alderman Gillum's report from the Recreation Committee meeting of January 11th. This was emailed and maybe placed on your desk.
Yes. The Recreation Committee met on January 11th, 2024. Aldermen present in the committee were Adams &amp; Gillum and Talbot stepped in to make a quorum for the committee meeting. Other Aldermen's present were Barbogallo and Tadio. Others present was the mayor, city attorney, city treasurer, superintendent of recreation, and the director of maintenance for recreation. The issue at hand was the Giorgetti Maintenance Replacing Refrigeration System, the update on the cost. Superintendent Peters and maintenance director Tyler briefed the committee on the proposed replacing the refrigeration system at the Giorgetti Park and closed our two options from ARC Mechanical from Wellington, Massachusetts. Option one was 1.5 million. The company does all the work. The second option was 1.4 million, where the recreation department will do $131,000 worth of that work. Most of it would be site, site, pouring concrete, and doing some of the construction work. After a long debate, how we're going to pay for this, out of the Giorgetti Fund, which is only $934,000, which is not enough, so a shortfall of $600,000. It was suggested that it would be, that they would qualify for the capital fund from the 1% infrastructure fund, whatever we want to call it. We haven't really called it anything, but right now, it's the capital fund. The committee decided, due to the fact that the fund is not set up yet and the timetable for the project would start in the spring, that they go back to ABC Mechanical and put a three-year plan together and cost, and cost it out for a three-stage process. So it's like year one, year two, year three. The process would also cost us another $25,000. But I think we're going to ask, the committee asked the director to go back and get the proposal and bring it back to committee, and he's working on that. So that issue is staying in committee. In the documents I sent you, there is a report from the Treasurer's Office on the Giorgetti Fund and where that was as of June 30th, 2023. Also in that document is option one, option two, broken down exactly what the company will be doing, and we decided to table that. But for your information, there is a lot of information in here for you to look at. That's why I attached these attachments to this committee report so you guys can, or you folks can, at your leisure, go through that information. Item two, Superintendent Peters briefed the committee on the rates for the recreation programs. The fee system needs to be improved for the city, Rutland City residents and the non-residence fees. Due to the new software management system for the recreation department, there needs to be a, a process to be, to make it compatible to their new management system. The Superintendent Peters suggested that we use, do not use a flat rate that we, that won't work with the new system, but to go to a percentage difference between residence and non-residence fees and rates for the Department of Rec programs. Alderman Adams moves to the full board for approval to approve the new policy for the recreation department programs on rates differences between city residents and non-city residents shall be 20% or $11, whichever is greater, and to give the recreation superintendent some flexibility to adjust the rate if or as needed in the future. And I so move.
Second.
That vote came out 3-0, and the president voted with us to make that 3-0.
So we have a motion. It has been seconded. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Alderman McCann?
So, I'm sorry that I missed this meeting, but looking at what's in here, right, we have the language here, shall be 20% or $11, whichever is greater, which seems pretty fixed, but then you added that point of adding...
She wanted that added on there. At the end of the committee meeting, we, we talked about that, to give her, so like, sometimes you might need a dollar more than what it is to make it work, or where the market can bear it a little bit more, where the market will bear the extra cost. But we also got to keep in mind when we're setting these things that we don't cost ourselves out too far, where we're not, we're not competing well with the other facilities. So there's a flexibility for her to do that, but that's what she wanted, a basic 20% difference between non-resident and residential.
So...
So if it's like a...
I think ultimately, the charter gives her the authority to set these rates. This was...
A policy change.
A policy change, and she's, as a courtesy and the spirit of collaboration and transparency, doing it and asking for us on a motion to endorse it, but the charter does give her the authority to set the rates as she sees fit.
Great, okay, thank you.
Additional discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none. Alderman Adams, did you have anything?
I was just going to point, the motion was at least 20%.
Okay.
Right.
So, yeah, the discussion was not to flex the rate down, it was at least 20% or whatever it was, $11, whichever is greater.
Whatever's greater.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Third item was the teen center in Skate Park. Unfortunately, we, a lack of communications with Sarah Cosgrove, we, she did not show up, and that's not her fault, that was our fault. So we will notify Sarah and schedule a meeting with the committee in the near future in dealing with the teen center in Skate Park. Just to make the rest of the board know that we really knocked off, a bunch of things off our little list in committee, so.
Thanks.
Of course, I just added three more.
Yep.
And that's the end of our report, and we adjourned at, sorry, I closed it up.
6:21.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Reports of representatives, we have none. Reports of select committees, we have none. Board of Control Commissioners, we have nothing on the agenda. That brings us to unfinished business. Seeing none. Miscellaneous motions, resolutions, and new business. Alderman McCann and then Alderman McClure.
Thanks. I saw some discussion on Facebook recently after an article in the Herald, I think, about the success of the buyout program and some questions about which businesses have succeeded or our success rate. And I don't think that I've seen, or if it's been out there, I've missed, sort of reports on the success rate of that program or, you know, where those businesses stand. So I would make a motion to refer to maybe the General Committee requesting sort of a, some sort of regular update from the RRA, maybe annual, on where those businesses stand, what the success rate has been, what has caused, you know, so that we understand the efficacy of the program.
Okay. Alderman Tadio?
Can I make a friendly motion to refer instead to Community and Economic Development? Because currently sitting in Community and Economic Development is a topic that could encompass that, which is just reviewing the Redevelopment Authority's economic development strategy. So I think part of having, you can make this motion, but part of that, I think it should come to Community and Economic Development.
Yeah, happy to make that change.
Because we're already trying to discuss stuff in that committee.
Perfect.
All right, so a motion to refer discussion of the buyout program to the Community and Economic Development Committee. It has been seconded. Any debate on the referral? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Alderman McClure?
I would just like to make everyone aware that the first evening Project Vision meeting will be this month.